I call this. March 22nd meeting, 2021, the Central School Order pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th orders, orders spending certain provisions, the opening law, G L, chapter, general law, chapter 30, K, section 18, Governor's March 15, 2020 order for extriculation of a number of people that may gather in one place, as well as mayor credit, so it's a question of urgency, did March 15, 2020. This meeting is a real school committee will be conducted via location. We'll post an audio recording, audio, video recording transcript to other departments of record proceedings. So as possible at the meeting on the city's river website, local cable access channels. Um, start this meeting with a moment of silence and a subtle flag. This is most science dedicated to the victims of the horrific hate crimes committed last week. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Phillips?
Here.
Description?
Here.
Yeah, sorry.
Mayor Credit Tony?
Yeah.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Ms. Barish?
Here.
Paton?
Present.
Dr. Ackman?
Here.
Woman?
Here.
Yeah, we have a forum.
Great. Our student rep's attendance?
Andre, don't forget about the interpreters.
Thank you. Mara, will you choose our interpreters for us?
Yeah, I'm here. My name is Mauro Quirós from Multilingual Services. We come with simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Portuguese, and Haitian Creole. Uh, we have, uh, tonight for the first time, two set of interpreters. They will switch every half an hour. Um, so I ask a little bit of patient and to the presenters to speak slow and be mindful that we'll be switching. Um, they will go ahead and introduce themselves, starting with Haitian Creole, Portuguese, followed by Spanish.
Hello, my name is Clive Jamatis, and I will be your Haitian interpreter for tonight.
Bonsoir. Good afternoon. My name is Gina Miranda. I'll be a Haitian Creole interpreter for tonight.
Hi, my name is Michaela Yang. We will be the Spanish interpreter for tonight.
Hello, my name is Karina Livingston. I'll be your Spanish interpreter for tonight.
And our, would you even purpose? Elaine, we cannot hear you. Still not.
You're on mute, Elaine.
Elaine? You're still muted. We cannot hear you. All right, well, I hope our participants can work that out. And when they are ready, they can put that out, and we can put the links for interpretive chat in the chat. While that is happening, um, do we have, do we have our student reps' attendance?
I am here.
Floor is yours.
Um, good afternoon, good evening, everybody. Um, my name is Brian Racinos. I am a 10th grader at Summerwell High School, and I'll be, um, reporting for tonight. Uh, my partner Natalia couldn't make it tonight, but I'll be covering for her. Um, first thing I wanted to mention was that last week, students, um, have received their progress reports um, via Aspen X2, um, where grades are inputted and announcements are inputted. Um, second is that the parent teacher conference took place on Friday, um, for the high school students. Um, third, the staff and students are invited, um, to a community conversation about the Asian American Pacific Islander Stop the Hate Movement and the rise in violence and the discrimination that has sparked the need for the movement, um, which will be held on Thursday, March 25th, from 3:15 PM to 4:15 PM. Um, along with that, the Summerwell High School Equity Team is also hosting a Women's History Month Matters. Um, every March, they honor the contributions of women to history, art, math, science, and more. This event will be over Zoom on Friday, March 26th. And next, um, tomorrow, um, Tuesday, March 23rd, there will be a student forum, um, so that students can have an input on selecting a new principal for Summerwell High School. Students can submit a question on the Google form provided on the Aspen X2 announcements page. Um, this forum is an opportunity for students to get to know the four candidates and ask some questions. Um, and lastly, junior class at Summerwell High School has been able to fundraise um, more than $500 for their SNAP fundraiser event, and that's all that I have for tonight.
Thank you, Brian. Um, any questions? Any questions for our student rep? Thank you.
I deleted your headphones. I don't remember what my logic was at the time.
Hey, uh. I think someone's not muted. I think they are.
Yep.
Oh, Ms. Barish, have a question.
Thank you. Um, I just wondered, um, I missed what our student rep Brian said, um, the fundraiser was for. Did he just say that again?
Yeah, so it's for the junior class. They are fundraising, um, for future events. Um, not, um, any specific events yet, but for the future. Um, and so they're just, um, starting as of right now, fundraising to have some money saved. And next meeting, I'm pretty sure Natalia is going to be here, so she can give, um, more information on that. Uh, she's part, um, of that, too.
Great. We'll look forward to it. All right, if there are, um, no other questions for our student rep, I'm going to move right along to our building update, uh, which I think I'm going to bypass the mayor unless he has changes, unless he has something he wants to say, because Peter, Director Rache.
Chair, uh, can you see my screen?
I can.
Excellent. Uh, for your record, uh, Director Richard Rache of Infrastructure and Asset Management. Um, review as usual, uh, our minimum threshold for occupancy is the filtration for the MRF 13 and the ventilation upgrades, uh, and we will continue to do work on disinfection, humidification, uh, as we occupy the buildings. Um, where we are right now, uh, we're continuing to install the wellness room exhaust and the humidification UV, uh, disinfection units. At the moment, we have deployed 207 portable units to targeted classrooms. We've got another 61 units, uh, that we're unpacking, staging, and deploying to classrooms. All of the air filters have been installed and all of the retro commissioning as originally scoped, uh, has been complete. Um, that retro commissioning did identify a number of issues, as you know, uh, which were, uh, maintenance issues for Honeywell. Honeywell has been, uh, onboard for over a month now, addressing those items. Uh, many of them are in scope that they, uh, simply need to address. Others are potential improvements that may require follow-on, either by Honeywell or by another, uh, contractor. And so at this point in time, uh, given what they have addressed and what they haven't, we've got varying percentages of, um, delivering the design capacity that we're looking for in each one of these buildings. Uh, and accounting of those, uh, items, a good number of them, uh, Honeywell has addressed, um, has closed out. Um, at East Servville, there are five that are on hold awaiting, um, parts and equipment that Honeywell has ordered. Um, latest update is that, uh, that, uh, set of parts and equipment, uh, should be in the city, uh, tomorrow, and they'll start work on, uh, that, uh, work at the east. Um, and, um, there's one item that's sort of open and in progress at Winter Hill. Um, we just still do have a number of items that are, uh, under investigation. Uh, give a little update on, on the specifics there. So for the open items at the Argenziano and the Capiuano, our engineer Fitzmyron Tochi and Honeywell are determining the next steps. Um, there's been quite a bit of back and forth between the two of them. Uh, we've got another update meeting tomorrow, at which I hope to resolve all of those issues, one way or the other, uh, whether Honeywell has outstanding items or if these are items that, uh, we need to address outside of Honeywell. Um, again, the East Serville parts are in order expected to be in, uh, Serville this week. Uh, at the Healy, um, we have identified, um, what needs to be done on those items. Um, they wouldn't be items that Honeywell would address, uh, directly, although they may be on the hook for, uh, some of the, um, costs associated with those. They were obtaining, uh, pricing for those, uh, at the, at the moment. Uh, and the same is true for one outstanding item, uh, at the West. At the Kennedy, there's no additional work needed. Uh, essentially, everything that, uh, we're going to do, we've now done the Kennedy. Uh, and at Winter Hill, uh, it's a little bit more of a complicated, uh, s- uh, solution there. We've defined, uh, the scope for a passive solution for this and are obtaining pricing for that. Um, so in terms of, you know, where we are, at the, at the last meeting, we mentioned that, uh, we were now in, uh, a, a, um, phase where our work at, uh, the buildings was not holding up occupancy. Rather, we would support the, uh, school department's phased occupancy of these buildings, uh, through a mix of what we're getting out of the centralized systems and using the, um, portable units. Um, what our calculations are, just to be very specific on it, uh, our goals are to provide four air changes per hour, and that with that four, uh, air changes per hour, at least 20% of that air that gets circulated through the central system comes from outside, so pure outside air exchange. If we can't obtain that target, we deploy the portable units, uh, so that we have a, a combined six air changes per hour. Again, that's more filtration than outside air, um, but we get six. Uh, and these are, these were the metrics that we had defined as achieving our low-risk threshold. This is just an example of the calculations, uh, that we perform, uh, for the classes as they're occupied. These ones happen to be at the Capiuano, um, and you know, the, the, we measure the size of the room, measure how much outside air we're getting. In this instance, across the board, we're getting, uh, two air changes per hour of outside air, which means that we do, um, deploy the portable units. Um, those portable units have a very high fan rate, um, so the exchange rates is quite high. And for most of these classrooms, as you can see, we're, we're getting at least six, uh, and in some cases, eight air changes per hour. Um, again, our, our, uh, metrics are a little bit different here, um, but I, I think it is interesting as we look through the phased occupancy and into the summer and into next year, how we view these buildings. Um, the light green are, you know, the, the times in which we will occupy the buildings, supplemented by the portable units. The dark green are areas, uh, are, are the times at which we expect the, um, the centralized systems to be fully self-sustainable, and, and we wouldn't need the, uh, portable units, which isn't to say that we would necessarily move them out of the classrooms, because we're going to have 260 some odd, um, of these units, so we don't necessarily need to pull them out. Um, but you know, we can provide additional, uh, air quality through those. Um, the slightly darker green, the kind of middle green, which may be hard to see on your screen, um, is the situation where we've had the tendency of the West. Essentially, those, um, uh, those systems are, uh, up to where we want them, um, but we haven't done the final testing on those. Uh, reason being, we won't go back into the buildings and retest and have a sort of building-wide report to share until we've done all of this other work. We, we only want to mobilize that contractor one more time. Uh, so we'll phase that, uh, return in. Uh, so i- in the interim, we'll, we'll still be, um, deploying some, uh, of the portable units throughout there. Um, you know, the, the ones to be determined, obviously, are Silver Brown School and the Winter Hill. Um, there is an extensive scope, uh, to be executed at the Winter Hill. Um, what we would hope is that we could do that over the summer. Um, but as I say, right now, we're getting pricing, we're getting plan to do that. Um, if it appears that it's going to take more than two and a half months, especially the, the, the summer that we have, um, you know, we may be, uh, looking at a situation where the Winter Hill couldn't be wholly occupied or may not, uh, we may not want to occupy that. Uh, some of the work at the, at the Healy may also impact, um, the summer. Uh, it, that isn't like total building. We may, um, be able to do different parts of the buildings, so it's not to fully interrupt. Um, and at the West, there is, uh, one rooftop air conditioning unit, um, that we know needs to be replaced. This is not critical for ventilation, um, but it is just a, um, a capital item that we need to address sooner than later, and it would not interrupt occupancy of that building. It's just something that we need to get done. Um, so, you know, i- in, in light of that, and as we're, uh, continuing to assess how we occupy the buildings, uh, between the combination of centralized systems and portable systems, as well as how we can, uh, potentially occupy, uh, the Browns. It's important to remember, we've been reevaluating, um, this all along, uh, and, and we reevaluate it uh, in terms of the overall risk profile. There, there's the testing program, there's physical distancing, there's, uh, personal protective, uh, equipment, the masks, the availability and compliance with those, the building and air handling systems and the vaccinations. These are all an overall risk profile, uh, and, and, um, whilst these meetings have been focusing on the air handling and the building updates, it's important to know that, that all of those other things, um, have also reached different levels of maturity that reduces the overall risk. Then, of course, the DESI requirements, uh, which may, uh, change the overall plan. Obviously, K5 has already come out, uh, and it may be that there's further directed from the state, um, that, uh, drives us to look at these buildings, uh, differently, and, and that's part of our ongoing, um, campaign. In fact, we've got a meeting, um, with Professor Joe Allen of Harvard, uh, School of Public Health tomorrow to review some of the, uh, work that we've been doing, uh, to continually update how it is that we operationalize this plan. So with that, I'm happy to turn it over to questions.
Dr. Phillips? And a reminder from Mara, for us also speak slowly and to try to minimize our use of acronyms.
Thanks for that, and through you, Chair. Thank you for that very informative presentation, Mr. Rache. I really appreciate it. Um, I'm wondering, that is a two-part question. Moving forward, will infrastructure and asset management be overseeing the Honeywell contract or whoever is servicing our HVAC systems?
Uh, to the chair, it's a very good question. So, um, to, to be clear, historically, um, uh, DPW has managed the, the Honeywell contract. In fact, infrastructure and asset management is only two years old, and one of those years has been by COVID. Um, we were created, um, for the purposes of operating the systems, not maintaining the systems. And, and it is the bulk of buildings, the water, sewer, the roads. Generally, there's a, a little bit of a division in, in anything, not, not just municipality and any operation. There's always a, a split between capital improvements and operations. Um, so I think moving forward, um, you know, it is still appropriate for DPW to own that contract. However, it is interesting to note that even before this happened, even before this came to light, IAM, uh, Infrastructure and Asset Management, and the Office of Sustainability and Environment, were working with and assisting DPW in rewriting, um, the, the scope of work for that, uh, program moving forward, basically using our technical expertise to, to assist DPW in strengthening that contract moving forward. Um, so I, I think in the, in the future, and we do have some details to work out around this, um, IAM will be assisting DPW on a more regular basis, uh, than, than we have in the past.
Great, thank you. And then through you, either, sorry, through your chair, either to Mr. Rache or the mayor, aside from assisting with refining the scope of, yeah?
Uh, the mayor wants, want to, don't want an answer?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'll, uh, if the school committee, one can ask you a question, because I could just tag it on to that answer, if that's okay.
That's fine with me.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, in addition to helping DPW with the scope of work, can either of you tell me what you're putting in place to make sure that whoever is servicing our HVAC systems is executing their contract with fidelity?
So, look, if I may, I'll answer this question in general. Uh, we are evaluating, as we've already been, one, not just the contract, and two, who will be the vendor, uh, because that contract is up, and we will be seeking not just the best competition, but understanding who should be moving the vendor, uh, on the, that's working and partnering with the city on this. In addition, Rich and the other members of the team had already been evaluating, you know, adding measures for different oversight, as he has alluded to. So we are working on that. We don't have a final answer. We ought to recognize, we had, uh, over the years, uh, the arrangements, we, most municipalities by default had to go into is your, you're basically asking a private vendor, which we were real comfortable with, and that's why we're looking for a, a change in how we oversee it, but potentially what they partner, we have to go through a procurement process. The arrangement where we could by default go into is the company that is the ma- the manufacturing installer who owns the rights to the equipment. You're asking them basically to oversee their own performance and so forth, and, um, it's just been sort of the racket, I will say, in that industry, whether it's, I'm not, I don't know Honeywell, whether it's Honeywell or Siemens or something else. So it's something we've had a focus on, and certainly we have a lot of unanswered questions. Some have been answered, still outstanding. Right now, we will get those answers and make no mistake. We are surely, uh, certainly evaluating who should be the vendor moving forward, and, uh, yeah, we could very well have a change. And as well as instituting, installing, um, our implementing great oversight, as I, we're, we're relying on IAM, the other engineers and other departments to see what that should look like moving forward. So there'd be more to come.
Very quick, if that's possible. Um, can you just update us on the timeline, please? Through you, Chair, to the mayor, can you just update us on the timeline and when you can present to us how you'll be overseeing?
Well, I'll present the first, thank you for you. I'm happy to be first to the city council. Uh, the timing of the contract, and I, and I certainly could, the school department and everyone, but publicly, it, it will really probably coincide with the next fiscal year budget, and Rich, you can correct me if I'm wrong. In addition, if I'm not mistaken, I believe the current, uh, contract expires at the end of the current fiscal year, give or take around there, and so we already had a natural, and you can correct me or, uh, my answer, if that's not completely accurate. But around that same time, we will be presenting that.
Thank you.
Ms. Barish? If you want to type your questions to the chat, I'll, I'll read it out for you. All right, so Ms. Barish is concerned of the timeline for Winter Hill. Um, we just, this is the morning and, and the check-in. Um, and we're certainly waiting to put in place of a camp in the fall. I will start with, um, Director Rache, and then I'll turn it over to Skipper to fill, fill things in.
Uh, yeah, uh, to the chair, um, we're, we're, um, we're right now working to, to, I get quotes for that work, which includes both the price and their schedule. Um, I, I think it is somewhat optimistic that, to, to think that that is a two-month, um, scope of work, um, but we'll have to evaluate that. Um, I'm, I'm hoping to have quotes for that next week, so that we can report back on, on what the timeline, uh, is for the Winter Hill.
Um, so we have a skipper.
So I think that this is something we've been talking about. Um, I think the priority for Winter Hill is that the city has the maximum amount of time it can to do the repairs for the Winter Hill building, so that next year is the priority of getting back there. Um, you know, to try to salvage any time this year, um, you know, we would have to look at very closely to see what that trade-off would be. Um, A, to move staff and, and students back, particularly, um, our large special education population. But I think, you know, our, our priority is really that we have a school that's up and running for the fall.
And there was also, so also was the similar question about the timeline for the Brown. If the mouths are clean offline in September.
Uh, through the chair, the, uh, the Brown is, uh, a different, um, evaluation. Again, we're not, other than installing the portable units and perhaps some fans, which is a relatively low lift, given the caveat that it would have to accept the electrical load. Um, uh, the, the Brown is more an evaluation of where we are in the overall risk profile, uh, which again is one of the reasons why we're, we're talking to Professor Allen tomorrow. Um, you know, given the, where we are with the vaccines, a robust testing program, good, uh, PPE, um, compliance, the fact that, uh, schools are now rated for three-foot distancing. Um, you know, it, it is a different world, but, um, w- we want to evaluate that and make sure that we're not making any, um, errors in judgment.
Right, um, Ms. Barish, it's our, it was quote, research, and quote, um, we need a backup plan in place for both schools is, is my point, and quote. Thank you, Ms. Ms. Barish, um, Mr. Tom?
Thank you, Chair Green, and through you to Mr. Rache. Thank you for being here again. I guess my follow-up was about specifically the Winter Hill. I understand that you're making the plans, bringing in the, um, appropriate people to evaluate it. At what point would a contingency plan need to be mobilized? So if it gets determined that we may or may not be done for September, at what point, how much lead time do you need to put in a contingency plan? Assuming contingency plan would be an alternative location or modules?
Uh, to the chair, um, the, the, the contingency plan, I think, is, as, as, uh, Superintendent Skipper alluded to, is not occupying the Winter Hill for the remainder of this, um, school year. Uh, you, that, that the I is to make sure that that, um, building is up and running, um, for September 2nd, or whatever the start of next school year is. Um, you know, if, if, if it looks like it's a one-month endeavor, then perhaps we can occupy the Winter Hill now and get that, you know, one month becomes two and a half months. We don't have the, the fallout risk. If my contractor tells me it's a two-month, then I think we don't occupy the Winter Hill. We start that work right now, so that we've got, um, you know, many months to burn for September.
Um, Madam Superintendent, do you have any thoughts on that?
No. No, um, I think that, you know, I think the priority right now is getting our, our schools reopened with the plan that we have. I think, um, you know, appropriately, looking at the Brown, looking at Winter Hill, those are, that's a smart process forward. I think in the case, they're very different buildings, um, very different needs of the populations. I think in the case of the Winter Hill, um, a third of the Winter Hill is special education programming, and transition would be very difficult to move students back to Winter Hill, only to relocate them for the summer, since the building will be offline for summer program. And about a third of the students in there get some kind of extended learning. So, um, I think that's kind of Winter Hill. I think the Brown, different conversation. I think we need to see what information. I think we need to see what information, um, you know, happens tomorrow and happens as Rich and his team continue to look at it.
Thank you both. So I think I understand your intentions for this year. It's super helpful for the community to understand the challenges associated with the Winter Hill this year. What I was getting at was for September. So, you know, there's multiple scenarios. One of the scenarios could be that we have planned to have it done for September. And we all know construction has been incredibly challenging. And so I'm just responding to the challenges we've had. And I would like to know, at what point did we decide there's risk associated with the Winter Hill and how much lead time will we need to line up a different building? If you're telling me there's never going to be a different building, that's another situation. It's just based on the past experiences and the challenges we've had as a city. I would love to know that, you know, you need two months to set up modules. That's what I'm trying to understand.
Mr. Mayor.
I'll just start off and keep it simple. We don't know until we have a project timeline and plan. Um, and then that's reconciled against what we could for you, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Peton just mentioned. You know, sort of what's, what's that bright line that says we need a Plan B? Until we know the project plan, we don't know what that Plan B is if necessary. But I want to go back to, we're always reminded because the city, we will come forward to the school department saying, here's what we believe on a capital side we can do. But we have to reconcile against the realities in the school departments, everyone here will know, to mobilize, move, come back in, get teaching, when that happens and how disruptive that will be for the staff and the students and for how many classrooms we're getting out of it. And one of the things that is resonating with me and all of us, I'm sure from previous meetings and parents is tell me at least, they'd ask us, tell me at least in the fall, we can all go back. And we will want, we want to make sure, and hearing the advice of Superintendent Skipper and others, that we can at least get back for the fall. So until we have a full project plan, we will know, but I will say we will be conservative in our estimate in that plan to make sure we don't jeopardize that just to get a couple of weeks out. Because I'm reminded we're moving kids, we have to move back, only a couple of classrooms, what are we going to get out of it? So if we know for sure, it's better to take a leap and move forward and get everything we need to have kind of be certain to be open for September. And we'll also have built in that the risk, and then we can better answer that question more accurately, whether we have to have Plan B two, whatever that is. Right now, we're not panicking because we don't have that plan. We'll know better than.
Any other questions for Dr. Rache? All right, hearing none. Dr. Rache, thank you for your time.
Chair, good night.
Are there other reopening updates we want to do? Lieutenant.
Um, there are. So, um, Mr. Maza, if you would be so kind as to put the presentation up with Ms. Santiago. Um, I'm going to ask if Dr. Curly has made his. Yes, I see him. Um, so Dr. Curly, want to just give a quick update while the presentation's getting set up for the testing?
Sure. Thank you. And through the chair, I have a couple of slides, if that'd be okay to share.
Oh, okay.
I'll try to run through them quickly. Unless you want me to take them in a different order.
Yeah, we can, we can do that. And you're a presenter, so go ahead.
All right, thank you. Are those up? Okay, so I'll try to make this very quick, but I know there's a lot of parent questions about the testing protocol. And um, we're trying to make sure that as much information is out there for parents as possible. So the site at the bottom has kind of all of the latest updated information. It has our latest figures of tests performed, the, the results in aggregate. Those are updated on a weekly basis. It also has videos on kind of how COVID testing will work. It is maybe helpful to show your child before they come back. And for scheduling, it has quite a bit of information about when each group should baseline, what the baseline process looks like. And I can talk later in detail or answer questions as needed on those things. Just quickly, basically, all we need is a consent form from you. And before your child comes back to baseline on the Wednesday, we have hours running from seven to 10:00 in the morning and two to six at night for populations to come through. This is just an individual test. It gives a sense of the overall positivity rate of the groups coming back. And obviously allows us to screen out anybody who may be positive. We're seeing a really, really low positivity rate currently. It's, I think, 0.11% positivity. So hopefully that trend will continue. Apologies in advance for the complexity of this slide, but this is to give everyone a sense of when by cohort we would ask you to baseline. As you can see, we have, we have groups coming back on all days except for Tuesdays. And that's because of holidays like Good Friday. We're trying to hold baselines on Wednesdays for two reasons, and I know this is a little bit complicated. But basically, just to make sure that the population coming in is not mixing with the population of students that are already in the testing protocol. So that's why they're, we're, we're asking you to come on a remote Wednesday. And we're asking you to come in within seven days of your return, your child's return. The lab we're using is the Broad Institute. It's in Cambridge. The tests get couriered right to the Broad and we are getting results back in an average of 13 hours, sometimes quite a bit faster. So I know there's some parent concern about, um, the cohort, the two cohorts that we're going to baseline the day before. And we have not had an issue with getting testing results back. And those come both in email to you, the parent or the guardian. And they also go to our health director. If there's any issue, we, we call immediately. I'll leave this one. There's a lot of different testing going on. There's a lot of events. But basically, as your child comes back, testing gets built into the day and will happen twice weekly. Staff are testing twice a week, students are testing once a week, as we've talked about. So I won't go into too much more detail because I know we want to get to the kind of main show. But I just wanted to give everyone a sense of where we are with the testing. The overall testing protocol will continue to update information on that website that I shared. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to take them at any point at the chair's direction. Thank you.
I know it's good. I will start with this question.
Uh, thank you for that. Through the chair to Dr. Curly. You mentioned a parental consent form, and I know that our health department is making the testing mandatory. So I'm just curious, if a parent doesn't sign the consent form, does that mean the child can't return or what happens then?
So the consent form is necessary for testing. It's actually, it's flagged in the TOSS system. You, you can't go through testing without it. And per the Board of Health order, uh, testing is a mandatory part of students in person return. Only a valid medical exemption, which will be reviewed by the Board of Health, is allowed to to have a child opt out of testing. I, I think, and I could pull the data on this, we've had, I don't know that we've had any so far. I think we've had full, full compliance and, um, you know, the sites I've been at, the after school sites, the morning sites, children are doing this well and, and smoothly. I know it's a little bit anxious at first, but it's something that our staff and EMTs have gotten really good at helping children through. So hopefully that will, thank you.
Got to hear it. Thank you.
Ms. Ms. Barish.
I'm going to try again. Can you hear me?
We can, we can hear you just fine.
Great. Thank you. Um, real quick, um, to Dr. Curly, through you, Chair Green. So teachers will be tested twice per week and students will be tested once per week. Is that true even when students are back five days a week? Will they still be tested just one day a week?
We are, this is, it's a good question. Sorry, through the chair, it's a good question and it's an open one. We're asking the public health experts that advise us to help us understand. It may be that there is a difference in gradient based on the age of the students and how frequently they test. But that is guidance that we, once we have it, will communicate out. For now, everybody coming back, staff two weeks, students once a week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on testing? Superintendent.
I just wanted to give a big shout out to Dr. Curly and to Jose Mendez and to Doug Crass for standing a lot of this testing up and being extremely flexible as the needs have come up. Or as we've discovered that sometimes there's a better way to do it and being open to that. So I just wanted to say publicly, thank you, because it's an incredible amount of work, what they've been able to do in a really short amount of time.
Thank you. I wanted to pass along praise for the community school staff who have also really stepped up. Many of them you have seen at testing sites, they're helping us a lot with manning the sites and as well as some of our parks and rec department staff. So it's been a kind of all hands on deck to get this set up. We have nine testing sites. I think there's 30 testing events going on throughout the week. So there's a lot happening, but everybody's been really great to make it work. So I want to thank, thank them as well.
Agreed. Okay, so, um, before we do public comment, because it is relevant to public comment, there is one more thing that I know we wanted to take out of order. Do you want to do all of the updates on?
No, so I think, I think Chair, it would make sense to do the interpretation services out of order, specifically because staff attached to that. And then we can go back to Assistant Superintendent Maza and pick up.
That was my thinking. So we've been doing interpretation now for four. This is our fourth meeting with interpretation. So we thought, keeping with, you know, this being an iterative process and wanting to do better and be better, it'd be good to check in on how that's going. So I believe Ms. Dabla is here to give it up there.
Dr. Dabla is.
I'll do Dr. Dabla.
Yes, thank you. And really thank you for a lot of things. I mean, we're, I'm representing the SFLC this evening. And we're, we're just really happy and proud and grateful for the enhancement that you've provided for us to, you know, have the full time multilingual staff in multilingual services. And it really is our mission to remove all barriers so that all, all families can participate. And so we're really grateful for, for that we are providing interpretation at the, at the school committee. But we do want to point out a couple of the challenges. And, you know, in this mode of continuous improvement, as Chair Green has mentioned, we just want to bring them to light because we know that we can find some solutions. Some of them you've seen tonight, actually. So we've learned because simultaneous interpretation is such a specialized skill and is very difficult and takes, um, full concentration from the interpreter. And our, all our interpreters, along with others, SPS staff, multilingual staff have had extensive training in this. It demands that people get breaks. So you all know that you have marathon meetings. And, um, you know, the, the strain on our staff. You know, we're, we're trying, you know, doubling up the staff this evening. We hope that that will, will give some relief. But, you know, just that awareness of speaking slowly, not using acronyms, providing breaks for people to do the quality work that they want to do. So that's one thing that we're, we're trying to address midstream. There's a couple of other things that, that we want to bring to your attention. Uh, and then we also have a couple of suggestions for you to consider. The, this actual Go webinar format is a little awkward for what we're trying to accomplish. So it doesn't have, as Zoom has, interpretation channels. So what we're doing is actually putting our interpreters and people who need interpretation into separate rooms so that they can, you know, receive the information. It is a barrier for their participation. So if you're in a room, you're not able to contribute. You have to come out of the room. And another thing that's happened really unfortunately is our interpreters, you know, we value everybody's work so much. Just in, you know, there were two events in the last three times that we've done interpretation where, uh, our interpreters were not treated with respect. And, um, you know, as a leader for the SFLC, I feel the responsibility that, you know, all of our staff is treated well and treated with respect. And we just wonder if the format of isolating staff in a public forum is, is the best way to go. So a couple of challenges, you know, just the amount of technical language that needs to be interpreted simultaneously. The, the barriers to the two way communication and the safety of, of our staff are, are some. We have a couple of suggestions, if I could just mention them, and I'm sure there are many, many other ideas that, that we could, you know, could, could think about. One is, as we're about to go into public comment, so public comment is, uh, we don't know what's going to come up really. And our interpreters want to be as prepared as possible to do the best possible. So a suggestion is to focus interpretation on prepared presentations. That gives our interpretation staff the time to review the highly technical material beforehand and be able to do, of course, questions and answers and those kinds of things. But to have a good idea of what the topic and the subject matter, be able to research and be prepared for, for quality interpretation, one thing to consider. Another thing is just to think about other forums that the school committee could engage with, with the multilingual community that offer more of a two way conversation. Now, it's very important for our multilingual families to receive information. But just as much, it's important for, to have opportunities, you know, to, to be able to share their thoughts, opinions and questions. In this format, with the awkwardness of the, of the platform, you know, the lengthy agendas may not be getting us to the goal that we want to get to, which is to remove the barriers, to be inclusive, to have accessible two way information, just for consideration.
Thank you. So before I open the floor to questions from members, I would actually make a few comments myself. First is, you know, I want to start by giving my sincere and deep gratitude to translation staff for their hard work. We know this is tough, demanding, especially right now. This has been, you know, a particularly demanding period. And so I thank them for jumping in feet first, feet first. And for all their work to that end, the idea that I know, I know a year plus until it's we shut down, everyone's emotions are frayed. This has been a year, no one, you know, wanted or expected. So I get it. But the idea that members of the Centralville Public School family are treating translation staff with disrespect infuriates me. We are better than this as a city. You know, I think it's important to remember that, you know, yelling at, you know, myself as an official is one thing. It's part of, it's inherent to the job. And I, I accept them on that, you know. Yelling at, I mean, Skipper's lead of our schools is one thing, is not pleasant, but it is part of the role of that seat. But this year especially, our staff has worked tirelessly and has worked harder than we have, you know, to expect them to. And the least our community owes them is. them a respect, understand that they are doing a job to the ability, and also beyond that point. So any, our community isn't respecting them for a few years, but also it makes it harder for us all to do our jobs. It's harder for us to attract quality staff. It's harder for us to ask them to do things like spend their money nights translating for people. It makes it harder for us to actually build a community we all plan to want to have. So again, I know that we're all tired, and we're all frustrated, and we're all angry. I'm begging the community to find better outlets for that anger than our hardworking staff. As far as the other forums, I believe, and I think I speak for all my colleagues, it has been a dream of ours to really do multilingual office hours. And now we finally have the capacity to do so. I'm going to explore. And I will be referring the order of our meetings, which is currently covered by a policy in our policy, rules, to figure out if there's a way we can make sure that we're actually front-loading information that is most useful to all our families in our meetings, even more so than we currently do. Ms. Governor.
Well, I want to thank Dr. Dabla and all of her staff for being here tonight and at so many different events. And in a year when you have all been working incredibly hard to then take on another long, 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 long day and into the night is deeply appreciated. But I also really deep thank you for being so constructive in your remarks and diplomatic and very with concrete suggestions because I do think the intent is right. But if we're not actually delivering on true access and real communication back and forth, then it's right to reconsider our practice and how do we improve it and strengthen it. I have always said, you know, our job as school committee members is not for people to come to us, but to be out in the community as much as possible. So, and this year obviously has made that very complicated. But I am so thankful that you came tonight with very, you were honest and straightforward, but also very constructive. So I look forward to the discussions to how do we can improve our practice, but also make these jobs more sustainable, enjoyable, effective, and to ultimately strengthen our community. So thank you.
I'm going to talk to real quick when we come out of order, because I know the mayor is leaving eight, and I have a question for him regarding this platform. GoTo, GoTo platform was a platform chosen by the city. And at the time, it was chosen because Zoom hadn't updated its security game, and that made sense. It is something we have to stick with.
Chairman, I don't know the answer to that. I've asked a question months ago on why we had to go to this platform. I was given that answer, but I'm happy to explore. There's an alternative.
I was.
So I will relay the message back to folks, and let me see. But there were some specific reasons. I just can't recall them.
The reason was security-based, and then they made sense. Actually, the week we started on GoTo, both the Boston City Council and the Kansas City Council had pretty horrific Zoom bombings. So the reasons made sense at the time. I have since had to ask questions about whether we take the change. And we've gotten several degrees of runaround. So if we tasked all the lawyers in one room, made that decision, that would be fantastic.
Tell me.
All right. Dr. Phillips.
Thank you through you, Chair, to Dr. Dabla. Thank you so much for that presentation and your thoughtful suggestions. I just had a question. I think it's probably something that I misheard. I know sometimes people really want to come to school committee to testify in public, to make sure we're hearing them loud and clear. And I'm wondering, if people need translation, what's your proposal for that?
Yeah. So I think when you're planning interpretation or translation services, you need to think about your audience, right? So public comment is directed to the school committee, right? That is the audience. So we would need a platform where a person could speak in their own language, and it would be interpreted for you.
So switching to Zoom, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah. So this platform doesn't do that for us.
But switching to Zoom would enable that to be possible. That's not.
It would be, we would be able to do that more effectively.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Superintendent Skipper?
So I just, I really want to thank Sarah, but most importantly, I want to thank our interpreters and our translators that work within our system. Often, they have to go to extra schooling to perfect their ability to interpret and to translate. They play such a vital bridge in our community. And that's going to be a bridge we're going to need and to rely on going forward. You know, I just, I think, I think, you know, there's a lot of positive aspects to technology. And I've certainly in my career found many of them. There's also a lot of limitations. But I think one of the limitations is that in-person connection, that when you're going to say something difficult to someone, you don't have to be in their presence to do it in technology. And I think, I've noticed that in our public meetings, there is, there's definitely a, there's definitely a lack of that personal connection that I think, you know, we've had when we had in-person meetings that has enabled, particularly in public comment, for things to just be venting. And I completely understand the venting. I understand that, you know, everybody wants school to go back to what it was, me and us more than anyone. But the people that are behind this, the people that are our staff, the people that start at seven, six thirty in the morning, and they're here until nine, 10, 11 o'clock at night on these meetings, you know, these are our staff. They love our kids, and they work hard for our kids. And they have good intentions. And so, you know, to Chair Green's point, there's direction to vent. And then there's just direction that that's not the right direction. And I think what happened with interpreters, I think sometimes what happens with teaching staff, or with our other staff, like the SFLC, our family, who are the front lines in many ways to our families, they get a lot of that. They get a lot of that frustration. And they're actually the ones that work tirelessly to make sure that our kids come back and that our kids are loved and cared for. So my hope is, as we get back to some kind of normal in Somerville Public Schools, that we go back to working hard at that relationship. Because I think it was, at least for me, one of the things that drew me to Somerville, that I hold up to my colleagues as being special about Somerville. And I have every faith that we can get back to that, once we get back to some kind of a normal system. So thank you again to the interpreters, to the translators, to, to anyone that was disrespected in those breakout groups, because your work is noticed and we see you.
Agreed. And actually, on that note, we'll do public comment. We have two speakers today. So they're both veterans. So hopefully forgive me if I don't actually read the rules this time, because I just don't have it up right today. But we have first, Kanga Burundi, then Jeremy Brown. Kanga? The floor is yours. Well, I'm gonna give, sorry, I'm gonna give Ms. Santiago time to pull up the timer. And I don't give Ms. Burundi time. Bear yourself. There we go. Ms. Burundi, are you there? Kanga, you there?
Okay, thank you. So, good evening. Let me start by saying, if I have to speak slowly for the interpreters, and they are my colleagues, then please give me a little more leeway. Let me also start by saying, congratulations on having interpretation and translation. Hallelujah. Let me also urge the city to provide free high-speed internet to all city residents and businesses. That's a never-ending cry. And I want to congratulate each and every one of the school committee and Mayor Joe Curtatone for working with educators over the course of months to create a sane and measured approach to the eventual return to in-person teaching. Sane and measured as it may have been, however, your hard work has been made moot by the unilateral edict from a faltering governor whose vaccine rollout closed mass heartbreak and even death. Made moot by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and its decree that all students and teachers must return to in-person learning regardless of aging and underfunded school infrastructure, ventilation protocols, community transmission rates, or studies from countries hit hard by a new wave of virus and viral mutations that make it that much more contagious. Control of local schools has long been the purview of local residents, locally elected politicians who know local conditions. Yet now, the state has taken that control out of your hands. Ms. Phillips has spoken of loss. Let me congratulate every one of you that no one of you can or will be blamed for a preventable case of COVID-19. There's not one educator or child in Somerville who will be able to lay their COVID infection quite at school at your collective feet. And now, any illness that is transmitted can be laid at the feet of Governor Baker. But beware, the pandemic is not over. Research from England shows that the British strain isn't causing worse illness in kids than the previous one. However, kids are still being hospitalized and dying, and they seem to be increasingly suffering from a rare inflammatory syndrome, Kawasaki syndrome, because of it, leaving a significant fraction of them with kidney injuries and other serious effects. Perhaps some parents would still be willing to roll the dice on their kid's health if they knew all this, but it's hard to imagine the vast majority would. Teachers are right to be careful. Politicians, both liberal and conservative together, with some public health officials are pushing a risky course of action out of step with the experience of other parts of the world. Worse, by invoking science to do it, they're misleading the parents who stand to lose most if the strain surging through the country does exactly what it's already done in other countries. The fact that it's being justified with appeals to social justice is especially perverse, given which communities will be hurt most if the virus starts tearing through American children. The evidence is clear. Kids do get infected. They do get sick. They do transmit the virus, and schools can be a key source of transmission. And I do provide written copies of this to Ms. Santiago. She may be able to provide them to our interpreters, especially if I speak again in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I close, I guess you want to highlight that, actually, that's a really good point. Remember, if you submit public comment and writing, it can't be translated. Thank you. Mr. Brown, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm Jeremy Brown at 234 Summer Street. I am reading a letter for a Somerville Public High School parent. I am the parent of a 15-year-old daughter who is currently a freshman at Somerville High School. I've asked, "Does this be read into the comments anonymously to protect my daughter's privacy?" I'm extremely concerned about the mental health of all our children, but in particular, our high schoolers for whom there is no plan for return to school. I have seen firsthand the effect that virtual learning and isolation has had on all of our children. My friend's 15-year-old son committed suicide three weeks ago, and I can't stop thinking about it. My daughter is 15. Most of her friends are 15. This could have happened to any of them. While checking in with my daughter's teachers on Friday, one of her teachers mentioned to me that in her long history of teaching, she never had so many students failing at the same time. She also mentioned that there were a large number of absences. I have yet to see the data from the high school as to the number of failing students and absences. Remote learning has affected not only their mental health, but has also created a learning loss as they currently attend school only four days a week and an hour less a day. We need to see this data so that we can adequately assess the effects of virtual learning on our children, and most importantly, use this data to plan how we will help with the learning loss and stress of this year. We have failed our high school students and need to get them back in school. Thank you for your time this evening. I yield the rest of the time.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. So next, we have the approval of minutes. Before I enter into motion, I want to acknowledge that Ms. Barrish found some typos in the draft. She will be working with, I'm going to get those addressed, but since they are not substantive, I don't feel a need to, they are typos, not content. So we don't need to amend the minutes before they are approved. So with that stated, I will take a motion to approve.
This is Carrie Norman. I move to approve the minutes from October 5th, October 19th, and November 2nd.
Seconded by Eleanor.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Superintendent Skipper, you call the rule.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Dr. Phillips?
Yes.
Description?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mayor Curtatone? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Barrish?
Yeah.
Curtatone?
Yes.
Dr. Ackman? And Ms. Norman?
Yes.
Ms. Carries.
Thank you. That brings us back to Superintendent's report. Superintendent, the floor is yours.
Great. So I'm gonna ask Assistant Minister Mazza and Ms. Santiago to put up the reopening presentation.
Sure. Santiago?
Great. So just a reminder, how the transition to in-person, contributing widely, talks about parents and daily health check, face covering, which is still mandatory, physical distancing, hand washing, our COVID-19 testing program, air quality in the buildings, and then the public health metrics, which we'll be following. Next, please. Thank you again to our interpreters. Next. So just to recap, you know, we had Phase 2B last week. So this, again, was bringing in about another screen. It went terrific, opened up some additional space in Somerville High from Winter Hill. The Argenziano, Capuano added some additional classrooms. East saw some of its multi-graded back, and Healy, again, started to phase in some multi-grades. Phase 2B also included our English language learners at Somerville High in the form of Learning Lab, our SEI-1 programming, K-8, which is in multiple schools, and RCT students, juniors who are volunteering, and seniors who are coming in for classes. Next, please. This is a reminder. So we heard back from the Department of Education today. We successfully were approved for our waiver. This was specifically a waiver that was related to delaying implementation of full-time for grades K to five until April 28th, in that it would allow us some additional time using the hybrid as a transition tool. So hybrid for all of our K-6 students will start no later than April 8th. And our full-time in-person model for all K-8 students will start no later than April 28th. So we did receive a positive outcome on that. The other thing to know is that we're still looking, and this is a kind of our chart that reminds us, we're currently at 3A on March 22nd with our pre-K and K coming back on March 25th. Next week will be our first and second grade. We have our new sixth coming in hybrid. And then April 12th will be our seventh and eighth at the end of the week. And then we have April break. And then we have April 27th, 6th, 27th, and then everyone comes back on the 28th. We had also requested consideration with the department. for the two days after April break, which was 26th and 27th, if we could do a full remote so that we could carry out our testing, our baseline testing as we have been. The department is not willing to give any remote days for the purposes of testing like that. So we have to go back and look at the 26th and 27th to talk about a hybrid for those two days and how we can safely be able to phase our students and staff back after the April break. We again will, you know, remind folks around fall group and make the school priorities so that everybody's here and safe. We will be testing during the April break at the later part of that week, and we will be asking students and staff to test so that we don't go too long without that test happening. But that said, we do anticipate meeting and test on the 26th and the 27th. So we'll provide the community a little bit more detail after we confer with health experts. We did get that update from the department earlier. Next, please.
Assistant Superintendent, just as a reminder, when we're talking about testing for purposes of this conversation, we mean COVID testing.
Yes, COVID testing. So this one here is just a different way of looking at the graphic, but again, it really shows that April 26th, that week is the week that we begin the full in-person, the 28th is the day that K-8 will be back full in-person. We continue to work on the high school model. Again, some of the data around the Brown and the Winter Hill will be important to figuring out for the high school what we have for spacing, but we're actively working to see what we might be able to put in place for students beyond our plans of labs, our house labs, our special education, or ALL, our athletics. So there will be more to come on that hopefully over the next couple of weeks. The Department of DESI has still not put out anything on high school yet, so there's still no guidance or what the expectation might be. Next, please. Just to update, be updated as part of submitting our waiver, the survey results for in-person learning. This gives you a sense of the district, the response rate for the district, slightly higher for the hybrid than the five-day. It also gives you the schools, and each of the schools, what the response rate was. In general, we're somewhere around the 70% to 80% range for students who are returning person, hybrid, and then five-day full. We are actively going to collect more from families that have not yet submitted a survey, and that will be done school by school through SFLC and through the school staff. So we'll update school committee as we potentially, you know, as we start to return toward the full in-person after April break. Please. At this point, I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent Maza to talk about this week and the events that will be coming up, the schedule, as well as to talk a little bit about what will happen for students who will be remaining remote, family choice is remote, and we'll press back for in-person. Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, Superintendent Skipper. Through you, Chair Green. So again, this week, we're welcoming back our students and staff in Phase 3A. We're very excited about this. That's our pre-K and K. And some other students, but for pre-K and K, Week 1 is this week. We'll have half-day phase-in days, and the phase-in days are for students to be able to establish routines and for teachers to establish routines that they can build upon while the children are adapting and developing stamina for in-person learning. As you know, our little ones have not been in school. Many of them have never been in the school building, so we feel that it's very important to have these phase-in days for transition. So Cohort A will be Thursday, March 25th. It will be 8:45 to 11:00 a.m., and that's both pre-K and K. And that 11 students will have a grab-and-go lunch. And then Cohort B will come Friday, March 26th, same timeframe, 8:45 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. They'll also have a grab-and-go lunch as well. And if we look at the other groups for Phase 3A, it's our pre-K and K, again, our students in our SEEK program, our redirected house learning labs, grades 9 through 12, next wave, a full circle, and the Somerville Childcare Center. And this is the group that really starts our hybrid in-person model. So within this, the students are divided into two cohorts. Cohort A attends in-person Monday and Tuesday and is remote Thursday and Friday beginning the week of March 29th. Cohort B will attend in-person Thursday and Friday and is remote Monday and Tuesday beginning the week of 3/29. Another important point is Cohort B and the in-person schedule will be adjusted to reflect the Good Friday holiday because obviously there is no school on Good Friday, so those students will be going to school on that Wednesday. And then Wednesday, as we know, remains an all-remote day until we transition to full-time learning on April 28th. Next slide, please. So again, this gives you a sense of the three phase and approaches that we have for pre-K and K. The top one, Week 1, which is this week. Cohort A, March 25th. Cohort B, March 26th, 8:45 to 11:00. Grab-and-go lunch, like we talked about in our last slide. Same thing for Week 2. And again, Cohort B, we talked about the, oh, could you go back one? Thanks. Cohort B, we talked about with the Good Friday, will be March 31st and April 1st. And then the third week, which is the week of April 5th. Cohort A will start April 5th and 6th. Cohort B, 8 and 9. The schedule remains 8:45 for pre-K, but ends at 1:45, which is their actual school day. And kindergarten goes back to their actual school day of 8:10 to 1:45. Next slide, please. So what will in-person hybrid learning look like? We just want to remind everybody, the in-person learning will be two days live in school where students will participate in breakfast, will have morning meeting. There will be X-block, skill development, math and literacy blocks. Students will have recess and lunch. There will be choice time. There will also be structured and unstructured play, both inside and outside. But an important point for us is there's going to be daily activities to address social-emotional learning and community building. That is a huge priority for us as we bring students back. And then remote learning will be three days. And again, we're prioritizing continuity during remote days as well students feel connected to their class. They will be participating in morning meeting and X-block in their specialists, small group activities. There will be some asynchronous independent work that students will do. They'll also have some hands-on and exploratory experiences to enhance and enrich what they learned while they were in-person for those two days. Next, please. And now we get into actual remote learning. So, you know, we want everyone to know that we value all of our learning community members. Our learning community is not bound by the walls of our school buildings. And any family who prefers their student to remain remote, learning full-time, may choose to do so. So it's a choice that you have, but we will not forget about you. You are part of our community, and we will make sure that students are getting what they need. Students who remain in remote learning full-time will continue to receive a combination of synchronous, which is live and asynchronous independent activities and instruction that aligns with our standards from a Somerville Public School educator. Also, students who remain remote and remote learning full-time will have the opportunity to enroll in after-school programming. That remains the same. You still can participate, and after school, we think that is very important. We want to make sure that students are able to do so. And also, students who remain in remote learning full-time will continue to receive social, emotional, and other supports as needed. So because students are home learning doesn't mean that they're going to get less than what students in-person will get. And also, students who remain in remote learning full-time will continue to have access to our grab-and-go meals. We think that is very important as well. Next slide, please. So the student-staff assignment process, I wanted to just let everybody know how this works. It's a process where staff are identified for remote learning assignments based on approval of leaves. And it's a collaborative effort between school principals, directors, and myself to assign staff and students to classrooms. Families who prefer their student to remain remote will indicate that through the survey or personal outreach. So there were different ways that we could get that data. Students that remain remote are assigned to a grade-level teacher by classroom or school. Remote classroom, teacher classroom assignment decisions are made based on teacher licensure. So if you, you know, are a kindergarten, have a kindergarten student, you most likely have a kindergarten teacher or an early childhood teacher. Classroom cohorts are prioritized to remain together during remote learning. We think that is very important to keep classrooms together. We can't necessarily, in some cases, keep all students from the same school together, but classroom cohorts, we do prioritize. Student services are also a priority because we want to make sure that our services are maintained. For example, our SEI-1 students and our resource room students, they have services that they need on a daily basis, and we want to make sure that they're continuing to get those in remote learning. So the process of communication, which we actually were talking about today in our principal meeting, the principals will be communicating to teachers in their buildings about any student class assignment changes to accommodate student requests to remain remote. The principals then have a letter that they send to parents to notify parents of changes in assignments and teachers if that is the case. And they also send the class list to teachers. Our new remote teachers then communicate with new families assigned to the remote classroom, and then principals follow up with calls to families as needed. But one thing I wanted to point out about the second-to-last piece, it's important, we have the sending teachers creating informational sheets for the receiving teachers so that way they can reach out and start to make that relationship, that connection with families before their student starts their remote assignment. Next slide, please. So what will my remote learning day look like? So again, students who are remote, you know, fall under the DESI student learning time regulations, which basically state at least 40 hours of synchronous instruction over a 10-day school period, which is averaged across grades 1 through 12 in remote learning. Does not include pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. We know the 10-day period is two weeks. We know that younger grades might receive a little less than the 40 hours, but as students get older, they receive more synchronous instruction. The students' day will reflect a typical school day. Students will receive at least three to four hours of daily synchronous instruction every single day. We think that is very important. We do not want our students who are remote to receive less than what they were getting right now. We want to continue with that with three to four hours of daily synchronous instruction. Students will have all their core classes, their math, ELA, science, social studies, Spanish, where applicable, their X-block, same thing if a school has that specialist and social-emotional learning during remote learning. All of those pieces will still be in place. Students requiring our ESL services will receive those, our multilingual services will receive those daily as required by the Department of Education. And students requiring special education services will receive those services as required by their IEP minutes. And an important piece to note as well is there'll be small transition times and breaks built into student schedules to allow for, you know, the breaks between synchronous blocks of learning. Next slide, please. So how will educators know where my child is academically? I had showed this slide at our last presentation around the assessment framework. One of the questions that I hear from parents is how will my child's teacher know where he or she is when they come back to school? Well, here are all the assessments that we're going to do for both in-person students and remote students. In fact, students that are remote are going to get assessed first. So that way, teachers know where the students are so they can create their success plans and create plans on skill building for each individual child in his or her classroom. So this assessment framework, it does not take, it takes five to seven minutes per test, but the data that teachers will have, the immediate data, will be very helpful in designing plans for students as we move forward. And again, students who are remote will be assessed first. Next slide, please. And how will we keep families of remote students informed? I had a conversation with a few parents today, and one of the things that we talked about was around making sure that presentations like this get translated and sent to remote learning families. We want to continue with our personal outreach as groups prepare to continue with remote learning, working very closely with family and community liaisons and leveraging other district multilingual resources to connect with families. We know the SFLC does a fantastic job in connecting. Our school liaisons do a fantastic job of connecting. We want to continue that so that way families who are remote are getting the same information as families who have in-person students. We want to have targeted updates to families of students who are remaining remote in all primary languages. And all families will continue to receive weekly updates, you know, from Superintendent Skipper. And again, we're also going to be utilizing our social media and other communication platforms as additional ways to help families stay informed. So we know communication is a big issue. We want to make sure that we're doing this in a variety of ways for our families so that way everybody has updated information. And if there are any questions, we can serve to, you know, to help with those. Next slide, please. And again, thank you. You know, I just want to say the slide that I had at the beginning, you know, we value all of our families in our learning community, whether you're in-person or you're staying remote. Staying remote and coming in-person are both choices, but we will make sure to support you, no matter which choice you have made, and we want to make sure that you know that firsthand.
Thank you so much. Assistant Superintendent Maza. I know that. Are there questions? Sound of this question.
Presentation through the chair to Assistant Superintendent Maza. I apologize if I missed this. Will there be regular specialists for the fully remote students? How is that going to work with the scheduling when everybody's back in person?
There will be regular specialists. We think that's an important piece to maintain that continuity with the regular classroom. So for example, if I have a student that is from the Winter Hill, the Winter Hill has set times depending on what grade level, you know, the students are, they'll be participating with their classmates, you know, from Winter Hill during those specialist times. Yeah, that's a big deal to us. We want to make sure that we have those as sacred.
Great. Thank you.
That's what Assistant Superintendent Skipper is still with us. He's just on her phone. So before I take, Ms. Barrish, Assistant Superintendent, anything you want to add?
No, just that we will, school leaders will be doing the best they can to work with parents. Some of them are doing or already have done sort of mini-town halls as a way to review the schedule. You know, we do know that the couple of weeks in the hybrid, you know, the schedule can be a little confusing because it hasn't been something that parents or students have had for, you know, the earlier part of this year. But we do think the hybrid is important to give that transition time, to get students back in, to give them a chance to be able to get used to school, to give educators a chance, you know, to get used to the new protocols. And after those couple of weeks, we believe that starting back on the 28th, we'll be in really good shape for the remainder of the year. So we are just going to ask for a little bit more patience for a few more weeks as we get through that. Again, school leaders will do their best to answer questions. You certainly can always reach out to Mr. Maza or to myself, but school leaders are making every effort to hold their local meetings, local town halls, local grade levels in an attempt to be able to answer directly for the parents. We have a FAQ going for the principal, so anything that gets asked at a principal, you know, occasionally if a question comes up around testing specifically or a schedule, and they may not have the answer right at their fingertip, we go through questions every day and an FAQ, and we get that information back to the principals as timely as we can. So again, next couple of weeks, we'll work through this together. Get to that April 28th, and, you know, we believe we'll be in really good shape for the remainder of the year and then going into the summer.
Thank you. Ms. Barrish?
Thank you. I have a few questions, so I'm going to try and prioritize, I guess. Yeah. First, I'm wondering if in the remote or even, I guess, in the remote, for students to stay remote, will there be access to band or string in addition to regular specialists?
Through you, Chair Green. Yes, there will. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay.
Chair Green, if I could just, another thing and to kind of piggyback on what Superintendent Skipper was talking about. We've been working with President Bridge with the SEU, knowing that the three weeks of hybrid and then the transition to five day learning, depending on how schedules are constructed could result in, you know, you create one set of schedules and then three weeks later you have to create another set, which is very daunting, which is very time consuming. So we, we both understand that there's flexibility within the scheduling so we can keep the hybrid schedules as close to what the five day in-person schedules will be to ensure a smoother transition. You know, the, the timeframes within the remote period during hybrid stay the same, but how we get to those timeframes might change a little bit, but I think it's important just to note that.
Thank you. Ms. Norman?
Thank you. Through the chair to Assistant Superintendent Maza. I know we're, we're focused on the students who are going back now, but I'm also getting questions. Maybe this is a presentation for the next one. How are we going to evaluate or something? Eighth graders, our high schoolers, and then I'm sure we're all hearing, is there anything definitive from the state about MCAS and what would that look like? So I will defer that, the MCAS question, but I think it's one that we all are looking to the state for some more guidance from. But for the terms of the seventh and eighth graders, especially the eighth graders transitioning up to the high school, those evaluations are so important in course recommendations. Is that a part of the plan for next month or what does that look like?
Sure, yeah. We can certainly talk about that with our next presentation. That is a very, very important point. You, you are correct. In terms of the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade is pretty serious to, to begin with, but when you talk about a transition from going from not in school to in school, trying to figure out course selection for next year, which is already happening, we can certainly give an update at the next school committee meeting if that's okay. And in terms of MCAS, um, again, you know, they, the state has delayed MCAS until May, but we haven't received any further guidance from them. So hopefully by the time we have our next meeting, we'll have some guidance and we can inform everybody of what that will be.
So Mr. Chair, just a couple of things. So as Assistant Superintendent Maza indicated, we're actively looking at the connection to the high school. One of the things around things like tours or bringing the groups of students up that aren't based in the high school on a daily basis is needing to run that through and kind of work through with the health committee. The best way to do that, in a non-pandemic, it's very easy. In a pandemic, we need to make sure testing's done and that in terms of how the kids are organized, that it's safe and that we can keep track of who's up there and where they're going. So that holds true even for the tours. We had planned to start the tours and the, the health committee wanted us to sort of map out a different level of planning for that. So that's something we're actively working on. But that connection is going to be invaluable and the high school is working on how to be able through Zoom, you know, through the remote setting to be able to at least start to make the connections with the eighth graders and the kids. So that when they then get to the high school, they know familiar faces, they know the, the counselors and they, they have some sense of the process. So that will all be coming. In terms of the MCAS, we are anticipating that there will be some updates from the state. As Assistant Superintendent Maza indicated, they have opened the window for both high school and for the grades three to eight. And they have down, they have downsized the amount of time that students would be taking the actual testing. So we're waiting to sort of see now that, you know, the waiver process will be, will be completed next week. For districts, our anticipation is that there'll be some additional information since they'll have a sense of, you know, when everybody will be coming back in person. So we'll keep our school committee up to date on that. And perhaps at the next school committee meeting, we can do something specific to standardized testing access and MCAS and the APs, just so school committee can understand how we're looking to, to achieve all of that.
Thank you. And if I could add to the request of information would also be for our current juniors who did not take the MCAS as sophomores, which is the qualifying for the John and Abigail Adams scholarships for the UMass system. If the state has given any guidance on what will happen with that particular the class of twenty twenty-two. And also, oh, there's one more thing I was just about to ask. Oh, for the high school, if any information on APs and SATs and any of those standardized testing, how will they be implemented? And if there's any, because I know currently students can opt, there's some choice in some online or remote. And I'm not sure if that's true of the SATs as well. So for our high school students, there is just an awful lot of standardized testing that they need to navigate. And so any information about that would be super helpful.
Absolutely. We'll have, we'll have Melanie and Tracy come to the next school committee meeting to, to just update on that. I mean, to give some sense, the amount of standardized testing at the high school between access APs, MCAS, and even actually separating out SAT, you end up with about three weeks of standardized testing, three, three straight weeks of standardized testing for, for all of the students where they'd all to test is normal. So it's, it's a big endeavor and that's actually part of the piece of the space that we're mapping out right now is to see what that would look like and what space would be left for the actual classes. So we'll, we'll definitely have them come to the next meeting as well as Sarah, Dr. Davila to talk about the access testing, which is again been pushed off. So we'll, we'll be, we'll bring them, we'll bring the full cast to the next meeting.
Thank you so much. I look forward to it.
Yeah, if I could just take a minute and just to talk a little bit about specialists, because I think it's important. I think, you know, as, as the committee knows, we value our specialists and, and we feel that they are an intricate and invaluable part of a student's educational experience. So what we're trying to do is figure out the best way to move forward with our specialists once we return to in-person learning. I think it's a little bit easier when you're talking about FISA because you do a lot of different things outside. We're looking at what it looks like for art classes, what it looks like for, you know, library media arts classes. We're in the process of purchasing mobile carts for teachers to be able to use, you know, at their discretion. But I, I want to talk for a minute about music because I think there are so many intricate pieces within the music program that we have. For example, I know one of the questions was around instrumentalists. We want to preserve, you know, what students have practiced, what students have, have learned so far with their, you know, instrumental lessons. But there are so many different varieties. You have bands, you have your woodwind instruments, which creates its own set of, of intricate issues when you talk about, you know, exposure. We looked at buying bell covers so students would be able to continue to play with appropriate spacing, you know, based on DESI guidance. We're looking at buying special masks that have slits on the side so students can still blow into their woodwind instruments. So we're, we're trying to, and we're working with principals really around creating plans of what that looks like in a building and outside a building and working with Interim Director Bosby. So, you know, all of these things are extremely important to us and we have been working on preserving, you know, what students have already had because we know that's part of, of what our well-rounded students need and what they deserve. So we're going to be putting together some guidelines and recommendations, you know, as we get closer to the five day in-person learning of what things look like based on DESI and CDC guidance.
All right. So we have a description again.
Yes, thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Maza. This is almost more of a comment than actually a question because you probably don't really know this at this point, but I'm thinking about the families that are choosing to stay fully remote and wondering how many of them are staying fully remote because they have concerns about safety because of being immunocompromised or somebody at home, et cetera. Or if they're choosing to stay remote because for a variety of reasons, their child is actually thriving in a remote setting and just encouraging us to think about how many are in that latter choice and what we should do with them going forward when everybody is expected to return to somewhat normalcy.
Sure. I appreciate that. Yes. We'll definitely look at that.
So through you, Mr. Chair, just one thing on that. So Ms. Crouppen, I think as the state has said already, they're not, you know, their anticipation is that everyone is back in person in the fall and they're not looking at, you know, sanctioning districts to be able to have remote learning in that way. There is an application though for districts to be able to put in for their own kind of virtual school. And so that is something we will be looking at. It's something we've looked at over the last four to five years. It's something that currently exists to the extent that it does with our ELP school as an alternative program. But I think, you know, to your point, I think what we have heard is that there are some students that, you know, either through anxiety or through schedules of the types of activities that they're involved in outside of school or frankly, kids that may have been homeschoolers in the past who would like the opportunity to be able to attach to some other parts of school, but to do their academic classes is remote. I think we want to look at how we can potentially continue to support that. So we will actively be taking a look at the application process for virtual school.
And if we don't take this opportunity to, to improve for students from school back in twenty nineteen didn't work, we have missed the golden opportunity. I, I definitely can't see that. That's their loss. Ms. Barrish?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm just thinking about when I think it was the superintendent mentioned that, I can't remember. I apologize if it was Mr. Maza or Ms. Skipper, but one of them mentioned that schools are offering sort of mini-town halls. And I'm just wondering if interpretation and translation is available for those mini-town halls? And if not, could there potentially be a multilingual town hall specifically dedicated to this hybrid to full remote, I mean, hybrid to full in-person transition? And actually, and if, if Dr. Davila is still here, I wonder if she would have any thoughts about whether that would be an effective, if, if those would be an effective way of reaching out to families for whom English is not their first language.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I, I, I can't see if Ms. Dabler's, if Dr. Dabler is still there, but I think, so Ms. Barrish, in general, SFL, the SFLC engagement folks are part of the town hall. It's, and when I say town hall, what I mean is really a parent meeting. So, you know, because SFLC would be a part of it, they would be there to be able to help support or to bring in any kind of interpretation services that are needed. And so that, that is happening. However, I think it's a good suggestion that we'll, we'll talk to the principals to see if they find that that could, that would need to happen potentially at a larger scale. You know, we sort of talked about whether or not to do one large town hall or whether it made more sense to try to have school leaders be able to do more of this at the school level since it's their parents. Some of the schedules are very unique to the school and a lot of the questions that come up are very much to the school. And so, you know, I, I think for right now, I think the, the kinds of questions that are surfacing, if they're an FAQ type of question, generically, we can post the answer and we can certainly make sure that school leaders are reviewing those as part of their meetings with parents. But for the most part, the types of questions are really colloquial to the school. So I, I will talk with Dr. Davila about it and, you know, see what she thinks about that. I know that on Thursday night of this week, there is a, there is a town hall in Haitian Creole for the community relative to vaccination and health questions. And I think what we've been trying to do is figure out the specific needs for specific communities, like the interest level of particular agenda items and then trying to carve the town hall around that. So we'll definitely take the suggestion back and as a question as well and, and report back. And, and if there is in fact a, you know, a desire and a need to do a multilingual town hall specifically around the switch from hybrid to full, will certainly help with that.
Are there any other questions?
I have one more, if I may.
You may.
Thank you. Hearing the discussion about high school and the high school transition for eighth graders and the various assessments that need to happen, I was reminded that I'm not certain what the high school schedule will look like next year. That's not necessarily something that I need answered tonight, but as I think my colleague Ms. Norman asked, if we could hear, you know, more about those issues at a future meeting, if you could talk a bit about the high school schedule at a future meeting as well, that would be much appreciated.
We can definitely do that. We'll talk with, we'll get Principal Lagambina and Ms. Remington and, and several other staff who have been involved in working on the schedule. Obviously this year it was, it was deferred. But they have done, these committees that have done a great deal of work on the schedule based on the ed plan. So we'll see if we can queue that up. If not, for the next meeting for the week, for the meeting after that.
Thank you. Right? Last call for new questions? Going once, going twice? So is it, continue, continue your report?
Great. Thank you very much. Just in terms of the personnel report, I'd like to recognize two educators. Tricia Pacheco, who is over at the Kennedy, a life skills teacher, would like to thank her for her twenty-seven years and one hundred and fifty-five days of service. And for another special education teacher that is at the Kennedy, Anne Berkwitz, who has thirty years of service to Somerville Public Schools. Both will be missed dearly by their communities as they go off into retirement. And with that, I believe that that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right. That brings us to the report of some committees. We'll start with the school committee for rules, March, March eighth. Ms. Barrish?
Thank you. I'm just bringing it up here. I apologize. Not having it quite ready. Hopefully this is the right one. Yeah. Okay. The rules management subcommittee met virtually on Monday, March eighth. Members President Eleanor Barrish, Emily Ackman, and Alana Crouppen, Superintendent Mary Skipper, Director of Enrollment, Regina Bertoldo, and Director of Student Services, Elizabeth Soncaster are also present. There was one audience member. I apologize. I'm going to slow down now. I was trying to read it quickly because it's long, but I remembered that there are interpreters.
We're all bringing together.
Ms. Barrish called the meeting to order at five thirty PM. There were nine items on the agenda. First was the approval of reports from January and February meetings. Alana Crouppen moved to approve the reports, seconded by Emily Ackman, passed unanimously. Second on the agenda was the extension of the emergency intent to return policy. Ms. Bertoldo and Superintendent Skipper provided background information and updated numbers on how many student families have notified Somerville Public Schools of an intent to return. Ms. Bertoldo expressed concern echoed by Dr. Ackman around the number of seats that would need to be held, particularly on the west side of town for students who will be in second, third, and the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Superintendent Skipper noted that she anticipates more students coming into the district and as a result does not intend to cut the budget despite a decline in enrollment since the start of the pandemic. She recommended that the policy be extended if Somerville Public Schools cannot guarantee full-time in-person school by the fall, for the fall by August first, twenty twenty-one, asserting that full-time in-person school is the district's goal and intention. Dr. Ackman moved to extend policy EBCFV for an additional year if Somerville Public Schools is unable to guarantee full-time in-person learning by eight, one, twenty twenty-one for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year with a request that families let Somerville Public Schools know their intentions by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, seconded by Alana Crouppen, passed unanimously. We took item number six, file JIE, pregnant students, out of order. The intention was to offer similar accommodations to any student who may be a parent or a student. The intention was to offer similar accommodations to any student who may be a parent or expectant parent, not just to pregnant students and new mothers. With the help of Superintendent Skipper and Ms. Doncaster, the Subcommittee worked through the language to make it more inclusive. Dr. Ackman moved to send the revised policy to the full committee. Ms. Crepchen seconded, passed unanimously. We next took up File JIB, Student Representatives to the School Committee. Ms. Barish recommended bringing this policy into compliance with current state law by using the language in the MASC reference policy. Given that the proposed policy diverges significantly from current policy, that there will be a new principal at Somerville High School, and that most high school students continue to learn remotely, Superintendent Skipper suggested that the new policy might go into effect during the next academic year. Ms. Barish wondered if the law leaves room for two ex officio school committee members, as has been the practice in Somerville. Language was added to clarify that the student advisory committee required by law should be representative of the students of Somerville High School, and should include one member from next wave. Dr. Ackman moved to bring the policy revisions for JIB to the full committee. Alana Crepchen seconded, passed unanimously. Ms. Barish said she would request legal review. Item number seven, File GEGFE, Paid Leave Policy, was tabled for a future meeting, so the Director of HR, Marianne McDonald, could provide input. Next was File BBA, School Committee Powers and Duties. As the policy states, the school committee needs to review and update policies periodically. Many of our policies are more than 10 years old. In an effort to bring the body of Somerville Public Schools' policy up to date, Superintendent recommends that the district hire someone to do a deep dive into the summer, in the summer months. Dr. Ackman expressed her enthusiasm for this plan. Ms. Barish offered to help in whatever way might be appropriate. This work may dovetail well with the effort to put SPS, Somerville Public Schools' policies, on the Massachusetts Association of School Committees searchable website. Item number four was a review of policies concerning police-school relationships. Superintendent Skipper started with the questions. We want to have an MOU with the Somerville Police. We don't know if school resource officers will be funded going forward by the city. There are multiple MOU options, sorry, there are multiple memorandum of agreement, memorandum of understanding options, the district attorney version, the attorney general version, or having something customized. The district had prepared an analysis last year than the pandemic hit. The superintendent recommends a robust conversation, including student staff and others who interact with student resource officers. Ms. Doncaster talked about the differences in the types of memorandum of understanding, highlighting reportable offenses and clarity of language in different versions. She said she would welcome the conversation about student resource officers, shared her positive impressions of the program and the relationship it fosters. Superintendent Skipper shared that the arrest rate for Somerville students is well below the state average. She pointed out that the restructuring of high school security that resulted in the new deans of student positions was about the security guards at the high school, not student resource officers. The remaining agenda items, Subcommittee meetings and reports, and File BEC, Review and Release of Executive Session Notes, were tabled for a future meeting. The meeting was adjourned at 6:39 PM. Thank you for your patience while I read that long document.
Thank you. Do we have? Is there any discussion? Ms. Crepchen, do you want to discuss our plans for further in the conversation about policing?
Sure, I can do that now, as opposed to new, our items by board members. So just to let our colleagues and the audience know, Chair Green and I are working on arranging a special school committee meeting, shooting for the first week in May, specifically to discuss the topic of police in schools. So it will be a larger conversation than in rules, and we're thinking a special meeting, so we allow plenty of time to discuss.
Thank you.
And do you need a motion to approve the minutes?
I do. I will have to take one, and then I-
I move to approve the rules Subcommittee minutes.
Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Philipps. And, Ms. Philipps, you have some discussion.
Yeah, it was a quick question to either you, Mr. Green, or Ms. Crepchen, wondering is, are we expecting that teen empowerment will make their presentations at the May meeting? Or are you thinking that will be happening at a different time?
That's a valid question. We haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay, because I know they were hoping to present to us before we made any decisions related to policing.
And that is one thing that would be the case. The procedure for how we do this is still very much being figured out.
Totally understood. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? I will call a roll. Why don't you go ahead?
Dr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Crepchen?
Yes.
President McLaughlin? Mayor Curtis Tony? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Barish?
Yeah.
Ms. Paton?
Yes.
Dr. Ackman? Ms. Norman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have our report on the finance facilities meeting of questions from Ms. Crepchen. We can't hear you. Assistant, may I ask you to sub mute? We try it again?
Yes, sorry about that.
No problem.
The Finance and Facilities Subcommittee meeting of the whole met on March 10th via remote participation. Members present were Dr. Ackman, myself, Mr. Green, Ms. Barish, Ms. Norman, Ms. Paton, and Dr. Phillips. Also in attendance, Superintendent Mary Skipper and Director of Finance, Fran Gorsky. There were 10 audience members. We had five items on the agenda. First were the bill rolls. Dr. Ackman moved to approve the bill rolls, seconded by Dr. Phillips. It passed unanimously. There was a question about whether school committee members could join some of the district professional development sessions, excuse me, development sessions on equity. Superintendent Skipper confirmed yes. She'll look into it and also plan an update on equity work at a regular school committee meeting soon. Next, we discussed the expenditure update. At this point, or at the point when we met on March 10th, we had spent 61% of the budget for the year. This is less than in a normal year, mostly due to being remote. There was a technology line item where we've spent 40% of the budget. This is not unusual, as tech spending tends to happen late in the year with licensing, purchasing equipment, et cetera. We expect transportation expenditures will increase as special ed students come back in person. Several of our revolving accounts departments have been hit hardest by the pandemic, like school lunch, community schools, and the daycare center. We expect this will return, this will improve with the return of students in person. Food service and community schools have done excellent work, and we want to make sure to support these programs. The daycare hasn't been open, but will be opening with 12 families in March. Next, we discussed the FY22 budget. The district started a little later than usual with budget collaboratives. We're getting a sense of where people are, where enrollment stands, plans for the future. Likelihood is that enrollment will normalize, excuse me, will normalize as we're back full-time in person. There is a list of mid-year staff additions. These will be discussed as new positions for the 22 budget. With new federal legislation, there will be an, excuse me, an ESER grant, which stands for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. We don't have an expiration date or a total amount for this yet. There will be funding on the city side and on the school side, and money set aside for school lunch funding. The HEALI, there is $150,000, excuse me, $105,000 for a program called Becoming a Man. We expect that to continue in FY22. Somerville High School has a $25,000 for the same program, and that's going to expand to a full program next year. So that will expand to $80,000. The Argenziano will be continuing their responsive classroom, as there is a segment of teachers who still need to be trained. In athletics, there was additional money put into athletics due to transportation, due to high school construction. And we may be able to adjust that this year, so there'll be some cost savings from that. And we're hoping to front-load some of, some next year expenses in athletics by spending some of that money on uniforms, equipment, et cetera. There were, money for library book purchases were reduced in FY21 because we weren't buying as many books due to COVID. So we'll have to revisit that for next year's budget. In special education, the first line was reduced $600,000 because we were able to prepay tuition for, in the current year, and we reduced out-of-district placements with increased in district. We're looking at a year-end close, so one thing we can do is to prepay tuition to take pressure off the special education budget for FY22. The bottom line for FY21 is that we cut 100, excuse me, $1.9 million from non-payroll, and in payroll, there was a $3 million increase. So for FY22, what we're looking at right now is a 5% increase in payroll and a 4% increase overall, which would be double what we received from the city this last year. Accelerated academies, transition academies over the summer may be supported by the state, and we're also investigating which of our partners can contribute to summer programming. The next item of business was our contract with NRT, which is a transportation company that provides buses. There was language in the CARES Act, which encouraged districts to pay transportation companies to ensure they would be able to survive when we came back in person. The Mass Legislature passed legislation that allowed such payment, which we did in June. In late fall, the legislature extended the act to allow this type of payment through June 30th, 2021. We negotiated with NRT to draft amendment language to allow payment for remote sessions in March and beyond. We expect them to continue to meet our needs as we expand in person. The contract includes financing, maintenance, et cetera, not just drivers and fuel. We asked for additional considerations. An affidavit that any federal aid the transportation companies receive will reduce payments from the Somerville Public Schools, and that this contract locks in year-two contract rates, we're currently in year-two, rather than moving to year-three rate, which would take some pressure off the FY22 budget. Dr. Ackman moved to authorize the superintendent to sign this contract pending NRT signing of the mentioned affidavit. It was seconded by Dr. Phillips, and it passed unanimously. Our next order of business was discussing our new high school. We have a brand-new building, and we know there have been issues with building maintenance in the past. So we wanted to ask the question, how are we going to make sure to keep this building in great shape? The city hired a full-time person from the mechanical operations side of the building, which is separate from the DPW. Additionally, the DPW is working out the plan for the cleaning component, excuse me, component, internal custodians, and contract services. We will check with the city about the plan, as well as arrange to meet with this new hire at a future finance and facilities meeting. And with no further business, the meeting was adjourned at 7:06 PM.
Do I have, do you have a motion to make?
Oh, and I move to approve this report.
This is Karen Norman.
I have a motion by Ms. Norman. Any further discussion? Hearing none? So, what do you call the rule?
Certainly. Dr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Crepchen?
Yes.
President McLaughlin? Mayor Curtis Tony? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Barish?
Yeah.
Ms. Paton?
Yes.
Dr. Ackman? Ms. Norman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Since we just discussed it as part of Ms. Barish's rules update, if there's no objection, why don't we take the items that are first reading out of order? So that we can get the summaries real quick and move on, since we just discussed them. No objection? Ms. Barish, would you mind explaining the three policies that are first reading and how they may differ from the old rules?
Sure. And so, as I mentioned in, sorry, Chair Green, do you have any preference to what we discuss first?
Not at all.
Okay. So I'll just start, I'll just go in order. The first item is File EBCFV, which was the Emergency Leave of Absence and School Placement Hold that we put in place so that families who needed to leave the district, either because they needed to move temporarily, or they needed a different school day arrangement for their children, they could leave the district and then return to their original school when they're able to come back into Somerville Public Schools. So as I mentioned in the rules report, we had a conversation about this, and it was suggested that we should extend this policy if Somerville Public Schools can't guarantee full-time in-person school by August 1st for the next school year.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want me to?
Yes. Next meeting is when we have to break them off.
Okay. I apologize. I feel like this is the first time that I've gone through this process.
I apologize to you, Dr. Phillips, and to Ms. Crepchen. We recognize how you guys have thrown into the deep end as far as how to do your jobs, but you're doing fine. Keep going.
All right. So I will, I'll just read what we have here. File EBCFV, Emergency One-Year Leave of Absence and School Placement Hold Policy. Given the unprecedented circumstances of educating children during a global pandemic, the Somerville School Committee authorizes the superintendent or her designee at the enrollment office to allow for students who have unenrolled after August 4th, 2020, the date that the district announced a remote start for the 2020, 2021 academic year, to have a seat held for children in their current school if currently enrolled in grades K through 7 through July 1, 2021, if the student guardian requests as such. Students currently registered in pre-K can have their seats held for the duration of the 2020, 2021 academic year if the student guardian requests as such. For students in transition grades who make use of this policy, the district will still contact them at the same time as they do registered students regarding their lottery preferences for the 2021, 2022 academic year. This option will apply to all students in special programs upon reentry, updated immunization, physical examination, and proof of residency documentation are required. If SPS is unable to guarantee full-time in-person school for the 2021, 2022 school year by August 1st, 2021, this policy will be extended an additional year. Somerville Public Schools will request that parents notify the district by December 31st, 2021 of their intentions for the 22, 23 school year.
Okay.
Okay. So, the next one. File JIB, Student Involvement in Decision Making. So this policy, as it existed, was a bit less structured than what the current Massachusetts state law outlines. So we simply, well, we incorporated the language from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees' policy database, which is almost verbatim what the state law says. And as I mentioned in the rules report, we added a couple of items. One was that the students who would serve on the student advisory committee would be representative of Somerville High School demographics. And that there would be one representative from full circle. So I'll go ahead and read that language. As I said, it's file JIB, student involvement in decision making. As appropriate to the age of students, class, or school organizations and school government organizations such as student councils may be formed to offer practice and self-government and to serve as channels for the expression of students' ideas and opinions. The Somerville School Committee will take into consideration student opinions in establishing policies that directly affect student programs, activities, privileges, and other areas of student sensitivity. Students will be welcomed at Somerville School Committee meetings and granted privileges of speaking consistent with the privileges extended to the general public. Student Advisory Committee. Starting in January of 2022, as required by state law, the committee will meet at least once every other month while school is in session with its student advisory committee, which is composed of five students elected by the high school student body and is representative of Somerville High School demographics. Additionally, there will be one elected representative from full circle. The student advisory committee will appoint two students per semester to represent the committee as ex officio, non-voting members of the school committee without the right to attend executive sessions unless such right is expressly granted by the school committee. So that's the, the end of the proposed revisions. I just wanted to sort of bring folks' attention to the fact that the state law says a student will be appointed as an ex officio school committee member. So that was one of the questions that we had for the legal folk. Additionally, what was suggested by the superintendent, I believe, was that the students would sort of rotate by, rotate by semester so that more students would have that opportunity. So that's another place where it varies from the specific language of the law. So those were just two things that, that I wondered if the law technically allows for.
While I start calling members, I will say, if you can give me those questions of the law in writing, I will put them before our council while I answer before our next meeting. With that, I will take Ms. Crouppen, then Ms. Norman, then Ms. Dr. Phillips.
I just, through the chair, I would just wanted to make a quick comment about the reading of the one, the first policy you read. And I just wanted to make sure the audience knew that at this point in time, there's no reason to believe that we won't be fully in person in September. This was just a, people had been asking about that policy. So we wanted to make sure it was in place. I just wanted to make sure that no one in the audience heard that discussion and freaked out thinking, oh, they're thinking that we won't be fully in person in September. So I just wanted to clarify.
Our reputation is barring something extraordinary happening with variants of the, of the virus or some other disaster which we cannot foresee, that students will be fully in person next fall. Ms. Norman?
I, a friendly amendment on one, but in terms of the, it's, because it just came up, the guaranteeing of being in person next year. I, I, I don't know what guarantee, how, how, how do we determine what a guarantee is? Unlike last year, we had already decided when the commissioner had offered, said, prepare three different, you know, hybrid, remote and fully in person. We had already taken off fully in person as a, as an option. And so we knew that we couldn't, that's why that, that policy became, was implemented. I guess I'd like some clarification about what guarantee, what our responsibility would be in terms of guaranteeing. Because I, I, I fully, and I appreciate Ms. Crouppen's clarification. I haven't heard anything other than we fully intend to be back in person, but I don't know how we would guarantee that. And I don't know if that was part of the discussion that was had at the rules committee. And I, I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but I would like to have some clarification for that certainly at the second reading before we were to vote on that.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So it's, it's a good point, Ms. Norman. I mean, I think, what I will say is that everything I have heard from, from DASSI is that, that they will not be considering remote for next year as, as a district wide approach. You know? But again, you know, that is, it, 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 that is not, that has not come out formally. So I mean, I think what we're anticipating, and I think the spirit here was that some parents had actually asked us if in fact, there's something to suggest that, I guess in some districts, there was conversation about a hybrid. And that's sort of, I think where this all kind of kicked up and started. If, if someone were in that position, would you extend the waiver? And so would you extend this emergency waiver? And so I think, you know, I think the spirit of this is to let the public know that were something extreme like that to happen, yes, we would consider everything in our power to, to make an accommodation for families. That said, there's nothing at all to suggest right now that this would be any kind of a scenario we would be entertaining. And come August, we would have a pretty decent sense of where DASSI was on it and certainly our own city and our health department on it. So, you know, I think this is more just an insurance for families that have asked us how, you know, if that were to be the case in, in that extreme, how would we respond? Would we, would we allow the current policy to be extended? So I think that's, that's really the spirit of this one.
Through the chair to the superintendent, thank you for that clarification. I, I am in full support of the spirit of it. I just, with so many, so many variables of the, over the last year, I just would be concerned about anything that we would be promising that we couldn't necessarily deliver on, having been in that position more than once this, over the past year. So I fully support the, the spirit of it. And just to hoping that we can get back to normal soon. So thank you for that clarification. And in, on the student involvement, I would, I wanted to offer a very friendly amendment, which is in the line that says additionally, there will be one elected representative from school, from full circle. I would like to insert at least one. What we have learned from going from one student rep to having two student reps at the school committee is that leadership often grows in conjunction. And so I would like to have at least one from full, full circle, but not necessarily limit it to one. So to say at least would be my friendly amendment.
So as matter of private interest, since no one owns this motion yet.
Okay.
Hold on, I, I, I was thinking about, I was thinking about this. Don't worry, I figured this out. Is there any objection? Hearing none, friendly amendment by Chair's discretion is adopted.
Thank you.
Dr. Phillips?
Okay, so we have, oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry, no, you had a question?
No, 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 I, I just wanted to make sure that we got to the, the third policy. But if there are more questions about the previous two, that's great.
I'm just taking questions in order, they, they come from, come from the, on, to Phillips.
Through you, Chair, to Ms. Barish. I know this is not the time to officially propose amendments, but just wanted to raise a concern I have with the student involvement in decision making policy, which I think in general is great. And I think it's a little vague in part because the legislation behind it is vague. But I worry that in a single high school district, setting up a student advisory committee without being very clear on the purpose of the committee could lead to the school committee unintentionally micromanaging the principal of the high school. And I'd like us to try to avoid that as much as possible as we set up this committee. So wondering if it's possible for, for our next meeting to think about, is there a sentence we could add about what is the purpose of this committee? Right? So that it's very much not about what's happening at the high school. Second thing is, is in the official, in the actual legislation, MGL 7138, it talks about the possibility of a district appointing a student outreach coordinator. In my experience, student advisory committees really require staffing to work well. And I wonder if we wanted to put in something in the policy that says something like the district, the superintendent will appoint a student outreach coordinator to support the work of the advisory or staff the work of the advisory. So just some things to think about, and I may raise them next week or next time we meet.
Through, through you, Mr. Chair.
Please.
So just a, just a slight correction. So two district high school. District with two high school. Yep. And so, and that is in fact, why the importance of having full circle at the table, you know, as part of that. I think, you know, one of the, one of the ways to, to be able to sort of have it be much more collaborative is I, you know, I, I like the idea of attaching somebody or, or some ones to the, you know, to the advisory council. I think it, it's really helpful in the kids taking the lead on the agenda formation and what's important to them. But I do agree that if it becomes so narrow that it's just the high school and it's not broader set of policy or, you know, or helping the kids to help the students to get there, then it can, it could be just more singly focused on either school. So I, I like the idea of having somebody that from the district could work through that and that, you know, let me give some thought to who that could be. It could be student support. It could be, you know, our equity and excellence, excellence director. I, I think there's a number of different opportunities there. So let me give some thought to that. But I do like the idea of having district partnership with the student advisory committee, because I think it helps, it, it'll help to, you know, build advocacy for the kids.
Thanks. And thank you for the correction on the high school. I apologize.
Oh, I'll do.
Ms. Barish, there was one you wanted to review?
What was that? Sorry.
You had, you had, you wanted to review the third policy?
Thank you. So as I mentioned when reading over the rules report, this policy was specifically geared toward pregnant, pregnant students. And we took it up with the intention of making it more inclusive of anyone who is expecting a child or is a parent and is also a student. So I'll read it. File JIE, school age parents or expectant parents. School age parents, unless they receive adequate assistance, may drop, might drop out of school without acquiring the necessary education or without marketable skills. Expectant or new parents will be actively encouraged to continue in school. The students and their physician, in cooperation with the school staff, will develop an appropriate educational plan if it is agreed they should no longer attend school regularly. Every effort will be made to see that the educational program of the student is disrupted as little as possible, that health counseling services as well as instruction are offered, that return to school after delivery is encouraged, and that every opportunity to complete high school is provided.
Okay, any other questions? We will discuss this more fully and, and, oh, this does, that does no, sorry.
Sorry, it's a new queue. I've got a lot of questions tonight. Through you, Chair, to Ms. Barish. Just, it strikes me that we have a childcare center at the high school. I know there may not be slots. Students may not be able to afford them. We may not be able to facilitate subsidies. But did we give any consideration to talking about facilitating childcare as part of the policy?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So it's a, it's a good idea. Our childcare center is not set up for infants. So our childcare center starts around three, three, little over, a little under three years old. So that is something that in the, in the future of the policy, we might be able to do. I think, you know, the other, the other likelihood is that we could make some kind of, you know, for preschool, that, that could be something that could potentially be, if it's an active student, that, that might be a little far out. I don't know. I mean, it, it depends on the, the, depends on the young person's situation, like in, but just in terms of just thinking about it. I think we would be best suited to work through, through our student support mechanisms to help find vouchers for daycare that takes young, young, young students, such as, you know, infants and one and two year old. Yeah.
Thanks. That makes sense.
Any other questions? Okay. Then, again, I said, we'll discuss it further next week. And brings us to unfinished business, resolutions for municipal wifi. This is not anybody, but really Ms. Crouppen, I think, can lead on this. I will, is there a motion? And you are muted, Ms. Crouppen.
Do you want me to read it again, or do you want to just take the motion?
I think you can take the motion.
I move to approve the resolution for municipal wifi.
This is Carrie Norman, I second it.
Any discussion? Ms. Barish?
Thank you. I actually have a friendly amendment to offer. Sorry, I'm scrolling to it. So it was in the, oh shoot, now I have to open it. I'm just going to tell you what it is. I think it was in the final whereas, it says we expect to be able to provide options for remote learning. I wondered if we anticipate, we anticipate limited but ongoing need to provide options for remote learning. I'm not sure. I wasn't sure if the intention was that we expect DASSI to allow remote learning. I, I just wasn't sure if I was understanding the, the intention of the whereas. Does that make sense?
As the person who edited that, I was, I'll take that one. That's actually a, a description, or a description I, I afford. Originally, like, we hope to be able to provide in that spirit of, we think that, that there's value to this, but we are very mindful of not saying that in such a way. Right? The idea is not to say that we hope to be providing because we hope we're not in person, but, but, but we hope that's an option. And yes, one of my advocacy rules is one of the most ways to get, to say, to do something is just to act as if soon they will. I mean, they don't have to say why they won't. So I would expect rather than hope, but I don't think we really care. If, if, if you want to reword that as the way, that feels better to you, I certainly don't have a problem with that.
Is it helpful if I read it again, or say it again?
Sure.
Yes.
So what I was thinking was we anticipate limited but ongoing need to provide options for remote learning.
Okay. Ms. Crouppen, is your motion, do you accept that?
I accept that friendly amendment, yes.
Any other? Questions or comments? All right, I will just say I'm half of myself and my assumption is probably the majority of the school committee will find shortly, is, you know, I have, you know, I think we all acknowledge that digital access is one of the greatest inequities facing our economy right now and beyond just lessons of this year. We know that any form of accountability required access to internet. We know that any form of accountability required access to internet. We know that any sort of real equity required access to internet. And it is past time that governments at all levels really explore how to make sure internet is universal. And as so many things have, have happened this year because of the federal government and the state governments failure to act, it falls to cities, cities and the societies lead the way. So this was like one more area where Somerville has to lead the way. And having said that, with no further comment, request for comment from members, Madam Superintendent, you call the roll.
Certainly. Dr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Cretchen?
Yes.
President McLaughlin? Mayor Curtis Tony? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Barish?
Yeah.
Ms. Patone?
Yes.
Dr. Ackman? Ms. Norman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That brings us to the school opening advisory report. Dr. Phillips.
Thank you. The school opening advisory committee wanted to make sure that their recommendations, which are made to the superintendent and the mayor are in the public record. So the three sets of recommendations are now public in the sense that they are in our packet for tonight. I wanted to just share with you the, the three sets of recommendations that were made, just to summary, so everyone's aware of where we were. So on January thirteenth, the school opening advisory committed recommended that the district proceed with returning all of the groups of students that returned in February. On February twenty-third, the committee recommended that the Somerville Public Schools proceed with the plan to bring students back in phase three A on March twenty-fifth. Three B, April first, four A, April eighth, four B, April twenty-ninth. As you know, we've made some changes to our groupings. So now for A, instead of including grades three to four, includes grades three to six, but the date is still the same. And four B, which now only includes grade seven and eight, will be returning April fifteenth, a little earlier than the SOAG approved the recommendation for. At the night, March ninth meeting, the SOAG approved the proposal for high school learning labs, which would be in-person learning labs for proposed hundred and seventy-nine through twelfth grade students who need additional academic support. The SOAG did not approve a proposal for high school teachers to invite students for in-person tours of the high school. And the reasons that the SOAG members did not suppose, support that proposal were that they were concerned about the ability to offer tours safely. Given that high school students and adults have a higher COVID transmission rate, maintaining physical distance is challenging when moving about a building on a tour. And the currently low prevalence of vaccinated teachers and students. Finally, the group also did not support a recommendation to allow high school teachers to participate in small learning groups on Wednesdays for the purposes of planning for co-teaching. The committee expressed significant concern as a result of the high-risk nature of adults meeting together unnecessarily indoors in uncontrolled environments. Adults have higher COVID transmission rates and the risk of transmission is greatest indoors. When transmission in workplace settings has occurred, it is often a result of adults gathering together in informal settings for discussion. As such, if meetings can be held virtually, the committee recommends that they should be. That's all I have.
Any questions for Dr. Phillips? Thank you, your service committee.
Anytime.
Someone to skip us, you, did you have a comment? Okay. Brings us to discussion of charter review committee. Just for, for, for those who don't know, the city of Somerville is reviewing its charter. The, the Somerville School Committee has been represented by Ms. Patone. We additionally, in that transition period between Ms. Norman and I, we nominated together to represent, to, to members of the community. Ms. Kat Rutkin and Bennett Sabiar. So they will be our representatives on the charter review committee. But the, you know, more so than most of our appointments, we feel it's important that the school committee to, to representative, Ms. Patone, have an organizational approach to this. So, Ms. Patone, do you? Say your words.
Sure. Through you, Chair Green. First of all, thank you for this opportunity to represent the school committee. Where the first, the goal of this committee is to look at the charter and see if it needs to be improved or modernized to better reflect the needs and concerns of our community. It has to do with how we're organized, is how our government is organized. And it has a very impressive list of members who have all kinds of experiences and represent different parts of our community. If anybody's interested in learning more, you can just look up charter review committee, city of Somerville. Or just go to the website and it's slash department slash charter dash review dash committee. It lists all the members, it has a link to the actual charter as well as information about charters and an FAQ. So I'm glad we're starting out with all this information being shared. The first meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October first. I'm sorry, people first, not October. And I wanted to encourage members to take an opportunity to look at the charter and to consider what items that we should be advocating for. I haven't had a full conversation with Chair Green, but it was proposed that we would possibly have a subcommittee. And I have, I have no problem with that. You know, originally I was going to ask us just to come to this committee and discuss it, but if a subcommittee is a better avenue and, and it would be, and I think you said an optional one, so whoever, I don't, we'll have to talk about quorum and different things about how to handle it.
Yes, I can see that. So first of all, as, as a body, we will discuss in broad terms. People start on charter review at our next, at our next meeting. If there are members who would like to advise Ms. Patone more in depth about the details and the nitty-gritty, we will, we will be creating an ad hoc committee. Not only Chair, but Ms. Patone. It will be totally committee of the whole, but since I don't expect there to be any formal motions, quorum isn't really an issue. So whoever can attend whenever we post these meetings can do so, is when we have these conversations in an informal manner. In a way that is publicly posted therefore, in keeping with open meeting law and better give Ms. Patone guidance, she does her work.
That's excellent. More will come out about how the committee is going to operate. There will be mechanisms for community input to the process, including probably meetings. Maybe hearings, it hasn't been decided. So when the committee meets next week, we'll hopefully hash some of that out. So, but I really do encourage people to check out the website to see all the people that are involved and all the information there. So, thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Patone? All right. Hearing none. It moves us to donations. I will entertain a motion.
I'll do it. I move to approve the following donations with gratitude. There is five thousand face masks and one thousand units of hand sanitizer by the TJX Companies valued at seven thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. There is seventy-eight thousand diapers from Cradles to Crans valued at fourteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. And eight hand constructed student desks donated by Barry Glass valued at eight hundred dollars.
Seconded by Eleanor Barish.
And Ms. Barish, do I see you have a question?
Oh, thank you. I was just, I missed when Ms. Patone said that the meeting, the first meeting of the charter review committee was, and I just was hoping for a repeat.
April first.
Thank you.
Do you have a question? We call the roll on the motion by Christian, seconded by Ms. Turner.
Sure. Dr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Cretchen?
Yes.
President McLaughlin? Mayor Curtis Tony? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Barish?
Yeah.
Ms. Patone?
Yes.
Dr. Ackman? Ms. Norman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Decided from board members, are there any? Okay, I have, I have a brief one, I do mean brief. For the last six months, I have represented the school committee on the hiring committee for the city's racial total business coordinator, director position. And I, my pleasure to say that we have extended an offer to a candidate. And hopefully, we'll probably not sort of that candidate will be, will be happening soon, but I am thrilled with the choice. They were a great candidate and a field of fantastic candidates. I'm looking forward to seeing this position fulfilled. Ms. Patone?
Thank you, Chair Green. Through you to Superintendent. I've had, and I'm sure many of my other colleagues have had lots of questions about MCAS. And we mentioned earlier that the school committee passed a resolution asking to have moratorium on this year. We know that the Desi is currently planning and we don't have dates, there's more information to come. But one thing that came up in a conversation with the constituent was, you know, there tends to be time that's given to quote MCAS prep. And I don't know what kind of instruction is going to be given to our educators this year. We know that there's no particular outcomes or consequences on MCAS this year. So I'm just curious, she doesn't have to follow up on it tonight, but I would hope that there wouldn't be a lot of MCAS prep this year. Assuming that that it goes forward and we have to do it. So that would be something I'd like to hear about in a future meeting. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent, do you want to respond to that, or?
Oh, certainly. I wasn't sure. So through you, Mr. Chair. So as you know, MCAS isn't a test that you prep for. I think what happens is that, you know, in order to have students be familiar with format and open response and, and, you know, the kinds of assessment that might be different than the organic assessment that they're getting on a daily basis. Sometimes educators will work with them around format of information. But, you know, it, the MCAS test for the standards. And so that is what we're working on all year, every day, are our standards. That's what our curriculum is aligned to. So we, we don't, we never suggest in any way, shape or form that schools spend specific time prepping for the MCAS. And this year in particular, we would, we would definitely not suggest that they spend time doing that. As to your point that it just, it's, it's, it's meant to, from the department's standpoint, it's meant to, to just allow and give some basic information about where students may be. I mean, we believe firmly that the organic assessment that our educators will be giving in the classrooms, the formative assessment, the assessment that they're doing on a daily basis, or in their writing prompts and so forth. That's the assessment that we want our educators to use to be able to figure out what skills students have come back with that have strength to them and what skills students will need support with going into the summer and the remainder of the year. So we will, as always, we generally send some messaging out around this. You know, to avoid the exact thing of the prep piece. But we will make sure, and I know that Assistant Superintendent Mazza is hearing this as well, and he's used to this. Crafting some academic language and messaging for the field.
Through you, Chair Green, absolutely. I, I can certainly do that.
Thank you. Any other, other board members?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I just wondered if Mr. Mazza, Assistant Superintendent Mazza, could you just give the committee a brief update on the Somerville High School principal search? I know it's coming to a critical juncture next week, and I know that you have updated school committee in memo format, but I think it would be good for the public here as well.
Sure. So as you know, we have four finalists that were selected. We're actually down to three, one accepted a, a job in another district. So we have three finalists that went through the initial interviews a couple of weeks ago. And the interview committee was made up of, of teachers, parents, community members, myself, a few cabinet members. And now where we are in the process is three forums this week. So each finalist candidate will go through a set of forums. Tomorrow's forum is students. We put students first because we wanted their voices heard first. There, there are thirty-minute forums where students will be allowed, will not be allowed, but will be asking questions of the finalists. And then rating them based on their answers. We want to make sure that the questions are the same for each finalist. And Wednesday is the parent forum. It will be multilingual as well, same process, thirty minutes for each candidate because we want parents to have an opportunity to have their voices heard as well and get their questions answered. And then on Thursday is the staff forum. Same process, everybody has thirty minutes, staff will ask the finalists questions. We, we think it will be a rigorous process. We wanted to make sure that we had a lot of voice in this process, as it wasn't just a one-time, we have one interview and, and we choose finalists and that's it. We wanted as many voices heard, as many community representatives, staff, students, parents to represent the district in this process. And from that, after the forums, the rating forums will be collected electronically. And all info will be turned over to the superintendent who will conduct final interviews and then make a final decision.
I have a question from Ms. Patone.
Through you, Chair Green, to Mr. Mazza. Thank you so much for that update. If a student or a parent is interested in participating in the forums, is, has it been in an email? I just want to direct people to where to go to find you for me.
Yes, Susanna sent out communication today to Somerville High School parents. The staff and students already have that through the school. They've had it for a few days, so everybody should have the link. And the more participation, the better.
So parents should look for their email from Susanna Hernandez-Mourinho from today. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just related to Laura's question, it occurs to me if the email just went to current high school parents, maybe it should also go to eighth grade parents, seventh grade parents, soon to be high school parents?
I believe it did go to eighth grade parents as well.
Okay, then that answers that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, just for the hard work. You know, it's, it's sometimes hard to remember that during all of this, you know, upheaval in term, we still have to run a district and, you know, things like personal, sort of a high, maybe the most important, how we make as a district. So excited, I'm excited as a quality to candidates. Besides, the, the addition of forums, the filings, this is, I think, an improvement of the process. And that, there are no other items from board members? Do you have condolences?
We do. The Somerville School Committee wishes our deepest condolences to the families of Grace Tringali, mom to Joe Tringali, Director of Operations, and Eileen Bakie, retired Somerville Public Schools Central Office Secretary and mother to Nancy Bakie, a teacher at the Argenziano School.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.